Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a routine justice for all.
For public information, a copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is available for review. Notice of changes in the agenda by the city clerk. Additions may not be made to this agenda less than 24 hours before the beginning of the meeting unless added under item five of this agenda.
No, no changes. I got it.
Citizens with business not scheduled on the agenda, as required by state law, no matter may be considered under this item unless council determines that the matter requires emergency action. Do we have any emergency action?
Monette, Mike?
What?
Do you have some emergency?
No.
No. Closed session. Council reserves the right to enter into closed session if deemed necessary if the item is on the agenda as per section 841410 of the Nebraska revised statutes. Consent calendar. Items in the consent calendar are proposed for adoption by one action for all items unless any member of the council requests that an item be considered separately. Do we have any questions on the consent calendar? Not? Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Phillips?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
Bidla?
Yes. Claim removed from consent calendar. Counsel to consider and take action on the claim from Intralinks in the amount of $10,908.13.
I need to declare a conflict.
Now you get a motion to approve Scott's conflict.
I approve his conflict.
Have a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? Okay.
Solomon?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
Bidla?
Yes. Okay, counsel to consider and take action on the claim from Intralinks in the amount of $10,908.13. Questions on that?
No questions.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Solomon?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
Bidla?
Yes. Financial report. Counsel to receive the May 2025 financial report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Lane is our finance director. Lane, some time to catch up. All right, page one. This is just the net change from beginning of year to where we are currently. And if you look at the bottom, that's the one, the important one. You can see that from the beginning of the year to now, we're up $3.8 million. Right now, some of that will go down as we start spending a little bit more in the summertime. Some of these projects kind of kick up and stuff too, so. The next one just kind of shows the monthly change in cash too. So you can see where we were at at the end of the month. We, the only three that I really wanted to highlight here was the special projects. We paid out the ARPA tax. That's that increase in the 2% at the EEA at the mall.
Oh.
Over there. And so that one, that's where that comes out of. And then PD got two new vehicles. And then we had this light gate at the wastewater treatment plant, so. Nothing too crazy last month. And then the next two pages, again, those are just kind of the budget to actual comparisons. The first one, if you look, it's 66% of the fiscal year. That's kind of the percentage you want to, we want to be around. All the expenditures are either at or below. And on the revenue side, we're either at or above, so it's about where we want to be, so. Nothing, nothing too crazy. And then everything else is just the where we are from, actual what we've spent and what we've received in revenue. And this is always just kind of a good, you know, picture to just show where we're at if we're, you know, departments are overspending or not. And obviously, you know, we talk about special projects every time. That was one. We've received all that revenue already. We already have all the ARPA money. And so that's going to be negative, and that's okay. But all the proprietary funds look really good. And see, Environmental Services is up $745,000. That's really good. Waste Water is up $148,000. That's pretty good. Water, people are going to start watering their grass. That'll tick up as the, as the year goes on too, so. That's really all I have for you guys this month. If you guys have any questions.
Lane, what was your comment on the debt services one?
Oh, so we switched the, the street payments, the street debt service payments. We switched those to debt service instead of the street fund.
Oh.
And so they're, they're coming out of debt service. Now, it's just a way to spin that fund down. We can only spend it on debt, and that's the only debt that we have. And so we moved that. I visited with the auditors about moving that out of the Transportation Department into the Debt Service Department. So we're just spinning that debt service fund down.
Okay.
So.
And that, along with the ARPA under the special projects, is why those are pretty large negative.
Yeah, and if you scroll up, Lane, go up one more page. One more? One more. Yep, right there. So, oh, no, sorry, one more. My bad. The very first one. If you look at debt service, you can see like we are down the two, the 2.8 million. That was from transferring those payments. That was a combination of last year's payments. We moved those as well too during the audit process. And so, and it also allowed the street, the Transportation Department to, that fund is up, obviously about 2.9 as well too, so. It's better for the street department and better to get that debt service money spent too. We don't want a large debt service balance.
Sure.
So IRS says we can have 1/12 of our debt in the debt service account, so. By spending it down, that's what we're doing. We're getting to that IRS threshold that way, so.
Seems like there was a article that from the state perspective, the tax is up, but still down, but for May it was up. Is that?
Oh, for sales tax?
Sales tax, yeah.
I would say it was probably average. I haven't got this month's, but I haven't seen this month's report yet, which would have been from two months ago, but what we received in May was about an average month. It wasn't crazy high, it wasn't crazy low either, so.
Okay.
But that's, I think what the article that you're probably referring to is talking about the refunds, those Imagine Nebraska refunds that are pretty significant, I think, from the state's perspective, so. Something they'll probably, a program they'll watch, but I wouldn't say it's affected us greatly here in Scottsbluff, but.
On your revenue expenditure page, oh, what safety's down? That's just because we bought the vehicles?
Yeah, yeah. That was the purchase of the two new patrol vehicles.
Okay.
Yeah, other than that, we're just chugging along on the budget now, so.
Okay.
Questions? No comments?
It's nice to have a 1,032.53% increase in interest earnings.
Yeah, the interest is up, so. It's still, it's still pretty good, so. We're still around 4.5% on CDs, four, four and a half, depending on the CDs, so. It's pretty good still.
In that one category, anyway. No issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'm going to duck. I've got softball, so.
Okay.
Have a pub.
Thanks, Lane.
I need a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve.
Have a second?
I'll second it.
Any other comments or questions on financials?
Stricker?
Yes.
Bidla?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Okay. Public hearing. So if you, anyone who intends to speak at the public hearing tonight, if you could stand and raise your right hand. Anyone speaking at the public hearing tonight? Yep. Any staff? Do we have any, any staff? Kevin? Staff? Do we have any staff? Krista? Okay. Do you swear and affirm that the statements you make tonight to the city council are true and accurate? Say, "I do." Okay. So counsel to conduct a public hearing set for this date at 6:00 PM to receive information regarding a Class 1 liquor license for El Mocahete LLC DBA El Mocahete Restaurant LLC, 1013 East Overland, Scottsbluff, Nebraska. So open the public hearing. Yeah, whoever wants to start, yep.
So my name's Elizabeth Pedrosa, and I'm co-owner of the restaurant with my mom. A little bit about it, it's been there since 1995 on East Overland from my aunt starting it, but we took over about 11 years ago. So we've done some remodeling, and so we're here to ask for liquor licenses after all these years, because we have a lot of customers that say they need something to go with their Mexican food, so.
So this is your first liquor license?
Correct.
And have you guys already completed the training?
No, but we have all of it ready. I've looked through it. All our employees, we usually have about six to 10 employees. They'll go through that, and so will the managers, or my mom and myself and my husband.
And where will you keep the liquor at?
So there'll be a small storage area. Our restaurant is really small, so we probably won't have too many overstock, so we'll have a little bit of that. And then we'll have a, a refrigerator with a lock on it for it.
Okay. Could you talk a little bit about your process for IDing customers?
Yep, so we're going to try, we're going to do a point-of-sale system, and I don't know exactly which one yet, because we're still looking at it, and I don't want to purchase anything until it's, we're there. But definitely, everyone will be IDed and go through this, one of those apps, and then our employee will be, will have policies for our employees. If they do, for some reason, sell to a minor, will be terminated. So, and we're working on all those policies as well.
So presuming that you will get busier with the sales of some alcohol to go with dinner. I noted, I noted that it said in here that it appears that you have enough parking. Do we know how many spaces you have?
So we have some in the front, and then we have some kind of in the back. And then next door, we have Mr. Martinez actually opened up, and we, you can use that area as well.
How many seats do you have?
Thirty-four? It's really small.
We have eleven tables.
Okay.
I think it's thirty-four. Yeah, it's really small.
So you might have somewhere about half to two-thirds of that number of parking spaces, maybe? I don't know. That's a question.
So.
Has parking ever been a problem?
No, no. We actually were full, I mean, on Sunday, last Sunday, actually, not this one, I wasn't here, but the Sunday before, and I just looked out to make sure everybody was parking correct, and yeah, there wasn't any issues. The side ones were still all open, so.
No questions? Krista, do you have anything? You want to? Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's fine.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So we did a background for Maria, who is listed as the president, and then Juan and Elizabeth are listed as managers, so all three had a background. And did I say they were uninteresting? There was a traffic violation disclosed, so that was the only thing that we found. As she said, it's a well-established business. We've had no known problems down there. Parking has never been a problem, to my knowledge. In addition to her policies and what she went over, they also have cameras on the interior of the building as well. So they appeared before the investigatory board on June 11th, and the board did give a positive recommendation.
Okay.
Any questions for Chief, perhaps? Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Anything else to add to the public hearing? I have exhibits, Cam, taken away.
We have exhibit number one, the application of El Mocahete LLC, doing business as El Mocahete Restaurant LLC, located at 1013 East Overland in Scottsbluff, Nebraska. Exhibit number two, the city council checklist. Exhibit number three, the written statement of police chief. Exhibit number four, the written statement of city clerk. And exhibit number five, the written statement of development services.
Okay. Close the public hearing. Counsel to discuss and consider action on making a recommendation to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission regarding the Class 1 liquor license for El Mocahete Restaurant LLC and naming Maria Elena Pedrosa as the liquor license manager.
I'll make a motion to recommend, provide a positive recommendation to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any other comments or questions? Okay.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Bidla?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
Thank you. Reports from staff boards and commissions. Counsel to discuss and consider action on approving the mayor to sign the final financial report to close the CDVG owner-occupied housing rehabilitation grant.
So this is a follow-up on last month. I put all the invoices together, submitted them, so this is the final financial details of everything, and basically, just get this signed, and I can close it out as well as get the city reimbursed for the last, the last payment of invoices, so. Scroll down a little more. I probably shouldn't have included the instruction page, but yes. So that you just see the numbers, numbers that I went over last month as well.
Is there any chance they'll restart a program like this again?
Well, you guys would have to speak with us and see if that's something we want to try again. I have had discussions with Shireya about other CDBGs, but not OLR. Yeah.
And how many homes did you guys end up improving?
Thirteen.
Okay.
Thirteen out of, I believe it was 25 applicants total.
Okay. Well, it would seem based on the lack of use of it, they probably would not improve similar, another one like this.
You know, I just had to close this out in moral as well. And this had the misfortune of getting started, I believe it was applied for in 2019. You had all the momentum going, and then the, you know, the pandemic hit, which kind of flatlined it, and also made the $25,000 not stretch as far as it would have. So I mean, ideally, if we had done this in 2017, and had it, you know, could have had it done by 2018, 2019, you probably would have seen more homes, but yeah, with the, with the rising cost that, that put a hurt, and just having contractors that were led certified, that, that's another big hurdle. I was able to, I had two contractors that I could use, so. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Baseball and softball.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve?
Motion, so, so moved.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any other comments or questions on that? Okay.
Bidla?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Okay, counsel to discuss and consider action on the crossing guard interlocal agreement between the city of Scottsbluff and Scottsbluff Public Schools and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
Hello again. So before you is the crossing guard interlocal agreement. Previously, we had updated it to reflect changes in minimum wage. I think before that, they were at about $10 an hour. With the changes, they are now up to 15, but that's going to change again to 26. We were at $20,000 for the city and the 20,000 for the school, is how the last one read. So this increases each party's portion to up to 25. I guess with the raise that we intend to give, it's not going to max us out, so this should still be viable for two to three years before we'd have to revisit again. Right now, we have five of the seven positions filled. One is questionable. If we'll need to fill it, it's going to kind of just depend on traffic in that area, because right now, the one kid that was using that crossing has moved on to middle school, and so I don't know if we'll have a new influx of kids and still need to fill it or not. But we've really struggled to hire new crossing guards, and their biggest complaint is the, the pay, so.
So who, if somebody's sick, then who does that?
Patrol. So it first goes to the school resource officers, and then if they're unavailable or if they're out, then it would just be the beat officer. The schools are pretty great too, about having their staff being willing to help if it's really necessary. One of the locations on Second Avenue, they've been great about filling in at that particular location, because it's not too heavy with traffic, and they're pretty low speeds, so they're comfortable doing that one.
So then the follow-up to that is, though, presuming the patrol rates are much more than a school guard crossing, does that rate go against this money, or is it overtime?
Well, moving to call in for overtime to do a crossing guard position, it would just be who's on duty. So yeah, this money would just cover the part-time employees that are strictly hired for crossing guard.
So it doesn't affect the bottom line?
No. Any other questions?
Any other questions, comments? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Do I have a motion to approve the agreement?
So moved.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Phillips?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
Bidla?
Yes. Petitions, communications, public input. Counsel to discuss and consider action on a community festival permit for the Beef, Beans, and Bluegrass Festival on August 23, 2025, from 10:00 AM to 9:30 PM, to include vendors' noise permit and closure of the 1,500 to 1,900 blocks of Broadway and 17th and 18th Streets from Avenue A to First Avenue from 7:00 AM to 8:30 PM.
Hi, I'm Amy Westfall, president of Beef, Beans, and Bluegrass Festival. This is our second year. We're excited. Last year went well. We had about 6,500 people there.
Wow.
And so the streets she just listed that, I thought I was going to have to tell you all about it. We are just asking if we can shut streets down again this year and be able to host our festival in the plaza and on the streets downtown Scottsbluff.
I have a question?
Yes.
So on your map that you have shown barricades to close off and make part of the festival, 17th, and then the west side, the Avenue A side of 18th, up to Avenue A, and then 17th A to First Avenue, and, and then, of course, Broadway at 19th and down at?
To 15th.
15th and the side streets. The 17th, there's several parking lots that dump people from the alley. If you, if people exit there out of the alley, and they turn the wrong way, they're driving in the festival. Do you need to have all the way to first?
We are waiting to see, or because we're going to have a car show, we're waiting to hear back on that. We may not even do the side streets of 17th. We might leave them open. We just thought if we could ask for it now, in case we do need to put vendors going down one side, that we would be able to possibly do that, and not have to come back and make another presentation if we do, because we're taking applications for vendors right now. But there's a possibility that we probably won't even use 17th, that it'll be open just like it was last year.
So you have four blocks. Is that the same space you used last year?
Correct.
And then how long will this event last?
On the streets, it'll go till 8:30, and then in the plaza, it'll go from 10:00 AM until 9:30 PM.
Okay.
With the muse, live music, and all the food vendors.
Okay. So if you need all of the, or to, from Avenue A to first on 17th and to Avenue A on 18th, is there a mechanism that could put some supplemental barriers or signage so that people are clear that they don't turn?
We have that. We had barriers last year on 18th, because it was closed down, so we had no problems with that. We had barriers at the end of it, so people couldn't get through to get onto Broadway, other than the vendors, and then we shut it back down again.
At the alley?
At the, no, we shut it down at First Avenue, or Avenue A. So it goes right to the end, and that was where we shut down.
I understand. But what mechanism do you have in place to prevent an errant driver from pulling out of one of the public parking lots through the alley and turning the wrong way and getting to Broadway?
18th, there isn't. It's actually a private parking and with the man that owns it, so there is no parking lot right there.
Like thinking like behind the theater and Capitino and Company, they're on 17th. Jerry's talking about 17th Street where the Midwest parking lot.
Oh, I see what you're saying to me. I, I understand. We were trying not to probably, well, we may have to reconsider that, so that we don't mess that up, because otherwise, that would have people, we'd have to have some way to do that. Hadn't thought that through, so thank you for letting us think, think about that. I, I don't think we're really going to need 17th. I think it's, we're going to be okay with what we're doing again this year with just blocking the 18th all the way over, but.
And 18th has that same issue, because I drove past it today, and that dumps one way to the north onto 18th from the, now, from those parking lots back there. So we'll just, if you do use that, Amy, we're going to have to barricade those alleys so that they can't.
Oh, we had those barricaded last year. I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'm sorry about that. Yes, we did barric, sorry. I was sitting there trying to follow where, they are barricaded, so nobody can go either way and get through, because we have a little petting zoo that comes in at that area, so. And we opened that up long enough to let the petting zoo people get in and then out, and then it is barricaded again.
Okay.
Sorry about that. Little blonde moment there.
Have anything to add, Kevin?
I, I don't. I think it was a great success last year, so it should be bigger and better this year, I think.
We've got a lot more stuff coming into it and adding more, so we're kind of excited.
And I'm all for it. I just also.
I'm glad. I appreciate you saying that. And like I said, I don't know if we'll even need 17th, so I will keep that in mind of.
Okay.
Possibly keeping that out of the, what we need.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Do I, yeah, I think we're good. Good, go ahead.
You're going to need to.
Tammy will talk.
Yeah. Oh, you have.
It's on behalf of our liquor.
Oh, on behalf of, okay.
It's on the next item.
Yeah, let's have the permit first then, if that's, okay, are we pretty good with that?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the community festival permit.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Solomon?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
Bidla?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Okay, counsel to discuss and consider action on approving a special designated liquor license for Rack Sports Bar LLC DBA Baccaracks to serve beer, wine, and distilled spirits at the 18th Street Plaza on August 23, 2025, from 4:00 to 9:00 for the Beef, Beans, and Bluegrass Festival.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Tammy Cooley. I'm one of the co-owners at Baccaracks. I'm here to ask for permission and approval for an SDL. We were approached from the committee to see if we'd be interested in providing a, I guess, a bar-ish for their festival. We'll be doing beer, liquor, and wine. It will be our responsibility to make sure that we have people posted at each of the gates. I believe there's five. So that will be our expense and our responsibility to make sure that there are people at those gates from the 4:00 to 9:00 that we will be serving. We'll have three or four employees there that will be carting people and IDing them. We've already ordered the bands, or bracelets, so anybody over 21 will have on a bracelet, and they'll know not to serve anyone that doesn't have one until they show their ID and they're good to go, so. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them for you.
You didn't have alcohol last year, did you?
I didn't think so. Okay.
We did not.
Yeah.
Is there just going to be one spot, Tammy, where they're serving?
We're just going to be in about a 10 by 10 space. Scott, we'll have a tent-ish with the tables, some coolers, that kind of thing, plastic glasses. We want to do glass, of course, and make sure it's safe that way.
And people will be able to go wherever in the festival.
Yes, inside of that area, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And we will have a call early to shut down, so that people have a chance to finish their drinks, so that we don't have to monitor as.
Yeah, that's what it looks like.
As much, it makes it a little bit easier that way. That's what we do for bands on Broadway.
Yeah.
I don't know. I didn't make it last year, the crowd, besides the IDing. I'm guessing you kind of do like you would at your own.
Correct.
Establishment to.
Yes.
To see the condition of the person making an order. Like, maybe, like they.
Oh, like over-serving?
Yeah.
No, we will make sure that that doesn't happen.
Any other questions? Comments? Okay, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Stricker?
Yes.
Bidla?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm going to take any of her extra parking that she has over to Baccaracks.
Thank you. Resolution and ordinances. Counsel to consider action on the third reading of the ordinance dealing with occupation taxes to include liquor licenses IVLMYYKZ and ZK. I'll read it.
An ordinance amending the Scottsbluff Municipal Code at 6-6-18, dealing with occupation taxes, and including Class IV, Class L, Class M, Class Y, Class YK, Class Z, and Class ZK liquor licenses, providing for an effective date and providing for publication in pamphlet form.
And we're, we're adding these, right, just to meet compliance with the state? To our ordinance for the occupation.
To our ordinance for the occupation.
Okay.
Anyone have any other questions on that? Okay, I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Diddla?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, is this the big one? Okay. Council to consider action on the second reading of the ordinance to rezone two tracts of land located in the northeast quarter of Section 24 Township 22 North, range 55 West of the Sixth Prime Meridian, Scottsbluff County, commonly identified as land southwest of 21st Avenue and East 27th Street, also identified as parcels and, I'm not gonna read those because Kim's gonna do it, from AR, agricultural residential to OP, office and professional. Go, go ahead, Kim.
You're gonna be sad, I'm sorry. An ordinance of the city of Scottsbluff, Nebraska dealing with zoning, amending Section 25-1-4 by updating the official zoning district map to show that two parcels of land located in, in the northeast quarter of Section 24 Township 22 North, range 55 West of the Sixth Principal Meridian, Scottsbluff County, Nebraska, is defined by the meets and bounds in the caption of the ordinance heading, both of which were previously zoned as agricultural residential, AR, to O-P, office and professional, repealing prior Section 25-1-4, providing for an effective date and providing for publication in pamphlet form.
That's a lot shorter.
That's better. Good job.
Yes, still good, still good. Do you want to write any information on that? Just read it?
I think we're good. Yeah.
The annexation ordinance is connected with the zoning ordinance, so we'll read it one more time.
Okay. Okay, council to consider action on the second reading of the ordinance to annex a portion of land located in the northeast quarter of Section 24 Township 22 North, range 55 West of the Sixth Prime Meridian, commonly identified as tract land southwest of 21st Avenue and East 27th Street, also identified as parcel. Kim, go for it.
An ordinance of the city of Scottsbluff, Nebraska annexing real estate platted as a portion of land located in the northeast quarter of Section 24 Township 22 North, range 55 West of the Sixth Principal Meridian, Scottsbluff County, Nebraska, is defined, as defined by the meets and bounds in the caption of the ordinance heading, amending Section 25-1-3.1 of the Municipal Code and providing for publication in pamphlet form.
Okay. Anything to add?
Nope, one more time.
Okay, okay. Um, bids and awards. Council to discuss and consider action on awarding the bid for the 42nd Street Mill and Overly Project, Avenue I to West City Limits and Fifth Avenue to East City Limits to Simon Contractors in the amount of $624,237.50.
Good evening, council, mayor, Doug Gopper, Public Works. Um, so for this project, we received one bid from Simons. It said $624,237.50. It was under the engineers estimate of $672,000. And we asked the work to him.
This is 42nd Street, east of Fifth and then west of Avenue I.
Doug, do you have a estimate of the timeframe it'll take to complete everything?
A couple of weeks.
Oh, that's quick.
Yeah, it's scheduled for 15 calendar days.
Okay.
And they'll start August?
August 4th is our estimated start date.
Okay.
And, and we made, there, there was two different versions to where the sewer for the cemetery office was gonna go? And, and I understand it's outside of the street, is that correct?
Uh, the cemetery sewer will go under the street, yes. We're gonna...
The cemetery sewer will go east along the road, but there is a spot, a hilltop where there's a manhole out in 42nd and we have to tie into that.
But, so it won't, the whole, the entire length won't be...
No, no.
That is, that was what I was thinking.
Yep, yep, it'll just go under in one spot, yeah.
Okay. Just verify.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Doug.
Thanks, Doug.
Do I have a motion to approve awarding the bid?
I move to approve.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any other questions, comments?
Solomon?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
Diddla?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Okay, council reports, information only. This item is intended for council members to update and inform other council members of meetings attended since the last city council meeting. What do you got, anybody?
Got a brief, got a brief one. So, he didn't show up tonight, but Kai, the zoo director, has the three-year strategic plan, it's finalized. Um, the zoo liaison from Denver, that's part of AZA. He reviewed it, gave it a favorable recommendation and he'll have copies, we can all have. So, he'll have copies for each viewer, you can read through it, uh, you know, on your own and go through all the details. Um, visitation's going up, may, I think it's 6,800 visitors. Um, next Saturday, they're gonna have a special event for those who like lizards and snakes. Uh, they're having Rowdy Reptile Roundup. So you can hold the lizards and snakes, um, if you're into that sort of thing. And, uh, the Raisin Fines, they're gonna redo the reptile habitat area where they put the cafe. They're gonna redo that, I think it's called Slither Inn. And they're gonna update that and then put the animals back on display for the public.
I did talk to Kai today, so I, I knew that he wasn't gonna be here tonight. And I scanned the plan and emailed it to everyone, so now you have it.
The Denver Zoo Liaison, liaison gave a positive recommendation for that strategic plan.
Yeah, the strategic plan, uh-huh.
We, uh, have met with all but one department head to go over budget and we'll meet with that department head tomorrow. So we're tying up some loose ends and we're really right into the meat of the budget, so I'm very busy with that.
Okay.
We have a lot of meetings this week, Empowering Families Conference or Welcoming Communities Conference on Thursday. There's a lot of MPPD meetings Wednesday and Thursday. So there'll be a board meeting here at the Hampton. Um, I'll be there and I think Betsy will be there as well, so, a lot of meetings.
It's for a feature, but you got the email about the, the youth, the Scottsbluff Youth Leadership...
Yes, she had to cancel that for Friday.
Yeah.
Um, I did attend the citizenship ceremony last Friday, um, that was held at the monument. That was, um, very cool experience, there was 20 new citizens sworn in from eight different countries, so that was pretty awesome to see, so. Anything else from anybody? Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, McCarrigan?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Diddla?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned.